Almost meeting the board. The adjustments they've given us.
I'm, um.
Okay. So, what's going on? Uh, Public Community Center Building, General Services, support by.
So in your packet, there is a letter, um, for whatever support for Public Communities here. This is for the Asian Community Center. Community Center. It's been a long day this year.
I guess.
On. Building Communities Grant Application and Christine Bouvier is here to speak on this letter.
Okay.
Do that.
I'm Chris Couturier. Uh, I am a member of the Board of the Public Community Center. And we are applying to the state of Vermont for their, um, Building Communities grant. It's from their Department of Building Services and it's specifically for, uh, municipalities and not-for-profits to, um, uh, obtain capital, funds for capital expenses, capital improvements. So we had an assessment done on our building last year. Um, funded through the Preservation Trust of Vermont and they helped us prioritize. Um, first of all, what, what needed to be done and prioritized and what would do those things? And so at the top of our list, um, at least, in general, is work on the foundation. It's got a brick and mortar foundation, uh, a stone foundation, then brick and mortar on top of that. Uh, the brick has been painted over and that has melted and some, um, moisture being retained and it's deteriorated and it's just time for that, that, um, that aspect of the foundation to be, uh, maintained. So that needs work. And, uh, it was recommended that the in-ground, uh, site drainage around the building could use some improvement, especially on two sides, where the water is, um, being directed toward the building and, um, increasing the, the, deterioration of the foundation. So those two things are our targets for this grant. Um, we are getting some, um, quote, I hope to get a quote for that and put the application in by the deadline, which is Monday, it's five P M. So we would love to have the select board's support, um, for this application. They, uh, really do want to see that the community and, um, supports the organization and the, perpetuation of the building. Uh, the community center is, um, sort of rebuilding a bit after COVID and a lot of changes that happened with, um, moving around the food shelf in the building and getting major painting jobs done and losing a lot of our previous income, uh, stable income. So, um, we are rebuilding and part of that is, uh, programming and maintaining the building.
Thank you for that. Um, did you, did you say how much the grant is for?
It's a one-to-one match up to twenty-five thousand dollars and, um, they, you can get all twenty-five thousand, part of it or none of it.
Okay, so you're asking for the full, do I assume?
Uh, it depends on the, the quote. I'm assuming it's gonna be pretty close to the full now. So.
I'm supportive of this.
As well.
Make a motion. Uh, I moved to, um, approve. Wait a second. I moved to, uh, support the Putney Community Center's application and, um, the accompanying letter and authorize the town chair, the, I authorized the chair to sign. Second report.
Okay Fletcher, you have anything?
Uh, no, I think it sounds like a great idea.
Okay. Public comment. Mr. Baron.
Mr. Chairman, a question for the, uh, previous speaker. You mentioned, uh, one-to-one match. Uh, uh, building to general services money, uh, plus whose money?
The Community Center's money.
Hmm, thanks.
Any public comments? Home favorite?
Hi.
Can you not have the song yet? Please.
All right.
One half for us and original to Christine.
Thank you. And thank you Karen for sort of shepherd ass through this. Haven't, haven't done this before, so.
Well, good luck. I hope you get the funding. Yes. Yes. And let us know.
I will. Oh, you'll know. You'll hear me.
All right, moving on to the general fund and operating budget. First is lister to draft budget.
Sir Karen, if you had heard that first, do you want to write in?
No, I can talk about it. Thank you, gentlemen. Um, so in your packet is the listing or lister's office draft budget. If you look at F Y twenty-six, right? Um, the budget was thirty-nine thousand three hundred. For F Y twenty-seven, we are proposing an increase to sixty-one thousand fifty dollars. And that, that is a twenty-one thousand seven hundred and fifty dollar increase, but the increase is based on adding a line item for an assessor at thirty-six thousand dollars. So that is the increase to this budget. Um, we did reduce the salaries because if we go with one lister and one assessor, we reduce that. Um, Jordy is here to speak on behalf of, um, potentially having an assessor in Putney. Um, it was brought up in a previous select board meeting. Um, also in, in your packet is, uh, a draft contract along with some language regarding whether a town would like to hire an assessor. So these are decisions, um, that will be made by the select board. Um, the listers are elected. Um, an assessor would be a contracted position in the ones that. So. At this point, Jordy, if you wanna.
Yeah, um, so this is something that Doug and I, um, and maybe even I mean, how long ago we started talking about mentioning having an assessor. I know the last two years Doug and I had been talking about it, thinking about what happens when I retire. Um, because right now I'm the only one who knows how to use the new software. Doug has the, uh, knowledge of how to sub divisions and stuff, but, but, uh, ability to do it in the software. And I'm learning that, um, that we had started talking a long time ago about firing out the assessor position and we talked to Karen and we talked to the, um, select board in June suggesting that and suggesting that we eliminate the board of listers. Since June, I've talked to a lot of people around the state and we're no longer recommending eliminating the board of listers. Keep, keep that board in. They would run the grievance and do some other things, um. So in front of you, you have a sheet that has pros and cons of having a, uh, hired assessor, a contracted assessor and, and, and in this case, um, this is Ryan Silvestri from Newland Municipal Consultants, NIMIC. Um, not to be confused with NEMC that you hear as popular. N E M C. N E M C. Um, and, and Karen and, um, Doug and I met with Ryan earlier and, and were happy with what he was offering. He had wrote the, provided the proposed deposit that you have in front of you. But what we get with a, um, contracted assessor is we have someone who has professional assessment capabilities rather than the elected and newly trained. Um, full understanding of Vermont property valuation law. Full understanding and working knowledge of the software, which is, um, challenging of itself. I did go to a, at one of our ballot conferences, a train presented by Ryan. I didn't know at the time. So it's not a doubt it was Ryan, but, um, and, and Ryan or NIMIC in this case would take on all the, um, value-related aspects of the lister position, the, um, and we did a anti-bias training and stuff recently that all listeners have to do and it, if we have somebody from the outside, it's, he comes in with no local bias, no preconceptions. Um, if any of you remember trying to hire for the twenty-twenty-four reappraisal, um, if NIMIC is our company, we have an inside line to reappraisal. Um, right now we have one lister able to manage everything, um. And that, that's a little scary sometimes.
Yes.
How, how close we are to not having anything, um. If something were to happen to the, so the listers would take on these simple transfers, add those changes, office duties that don't involve value changes to property. So that would still be in-house, um. But were something to happen in-house, um, NIMIC has the capability for a further cost, but they have the capability of picking up that slack, um. Now I said, listers are probably in time when we will unable to meet all obligations and that would be if, if I retired or got sick or something, um. So we would stay on this office personnel post grievance. As you may have heard, it's really hard to get new listers, especially when they see the software and stuff, um. And it's unrealistic to train somebody who's unfamiliar with what, what listing entails and the software that it's, it's not gonna happen, um. It would allow us as listers to not be, have to have a full re-listed board all the time. Um, and finally, it will reduce the salary line, not as much as it would cost otherwise. And we spent a long time, Doug and I, trying to figure out cons of what, what's the downside of having a outside assessor and some people get pretty worked up about local control and we would lose full local control. Um, the person who's making the value determinations wouldn't be in the office regularly. Um, so the listers would have, what we don't do now, we would have anything that came in that was valued later and we would have to elevate, is the right term, right? Elevate to you? Yeah. Yeah, elevate, um, things to the company and, um, and it will add the assessor line. And I'm happy to answer any questions. I think Ryan would be happy to answer any questions if.
One point in this question. So with an assessor, Ryan, you would, um, defend your appraisal number, correct?
Yeah, up to the V C A level appeal and then anything that goes further. It would really be depending, depending what it is. You know, it's going to Superior Court or State Attorney Officer. And we would come to agree upon, uh, price on that based upon the longevity, how long we can anticipate that court case would go on. Um, it's just, it's a, the reason why we don't include that in the contract is because they could be very straightforward and simple and like no added cost or they could be encroaching or going to Superior Court and you know, it's days, 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 you know, and we'll struggle over a long period of time.
Thank you.
Um, I don't know how much you know about the ongoing discussion about the R A Ds, the Regional Assessment Districts. Um, I've been one of the stakeholder people that's been just talking with, um, my peers around the state, I guess, um, and, um, the NPVR, um, one of the one suggestions is to remove the, um, local B C A from the B C A process and create a regional board of, um, of the B C A. So they don't, they haven't, not, they haven't put anything, um, in writing yet, but one of the ideas is that each town would appoint a B C A member to that board, um. So I guess that's one thing, um, they're probably keeping, they are keeping the grievance level at the lister level, so I guess I'm assuming if the listers would pay a three, that's not then you say you defend the value, but you'd be.
You were the most, listers would run it.
The list.
And I think it would be there. One other, your person would be there.
Yeah, yeah. So the format of that would really be the listers would be, be running it. I would be there. Um, and then we'd all confer at the end, just like the board of listers would at the end to make the decision. So it's more to keep that local. I look at the board of listers as more of like local oversight and, you know, to be in tune with what we are doing in the office and throughout the community and use that institutional knowledge that the listers do have to get us off the ground here, you know, and, um, just start, just start working with the community. So we're, we're first and foremost civil servants. We, we serve the taxpayers of every town we work in and when, when it's puppy. So we, we want to, any fit and format for any process, we would work with everybody here and really decipher what you feel is the best way. We're not gonna come in and say, this is the only way we do it. The end result, that might be, hey, we, we gotta get from A to B and B is kind of a certainty, but how we get there, we can definitely talk about.
Ryan and I, I've been talking about, um, lister board relationship with the town or the people in town and he appreciates how we do it and we work pretty hard to be using for, you know. But that's how he likes. Before I said, that's what we do. He said, that's what we seem to do and he likes that and that's how he wants to work, so. And I think Karen, Doug and him definitely felt that.
Okay, so and also like you'd be doing current use, assuming the state doesn't finally take that over and the home states.
We, we haven't, we haven't worked that, certainly, because I, I can still do that.
I know, but that's, that's.
When I'm not, there's somebody else who has.
That's another piece of knowledge that, you know, that is pretty esoteric.
Yeah.
Um, so.
So I'll say this, in the proposed contract, it really might once says, we will perform all necessary duties to successfully file your grant list. So processing, current use would all, would all fall under that. So, you know, we, you, you know, I, I think we kind of fell into like an à la carte kind of conversation with the services, but we're, we're not gonna allow anything to fail. You like, we're, we're gonna do what needs to be done. So the town can function correctly, ownership's, you know, reflected correctly, tax bills get out on time correctly. That's, that's what we're about.
Mr. Karen?
Mr. Karen, uh, I have a question and then I have an observation. My question is to the gentleman sitting behind me. You said, quote, "We are civil servants," unquote, which means that you are a government employee. Which government employs you?
Uh, so I guess, I guess I misspoke. So as far as, when I say civil servant, what I'm saying is I, I work with the community at my, my foremost. So we are a private company. So I guess I misspoke, sir.
Be careful with that because civil service is a, is a term that has legal standing. Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, I have been a consultant. I've also, uh, hired consultants when I worked for large corporations. Uh, generally what we did was, we, uh, discussed hiring a consultant. We decided to hire a consultant and then we, uh, identified various candidates and, uh, interviewed them in, in various matters, one of which could be at a select board. This evening, before you have decided to hire an assessor, one such firm is present in the room, clearly has an inside track. And I, I in no way cast any reflection on anyone here, but I am suggesting that it actually would be more, uh, in, in line with standard practice in both business and government. If, uh, the, uh, firm, the question represented here this evening were considered along with other competitors so that we could make, so that you could make a more informed decision and the public would know the parameters of a more informed decision than one shows up along with a sponsor and, uh, we, uh, are supposed to consider, uh, uh, consider this person only. And I emphasize once again, I'm not casting any reflections on anyone. I'm questioning not the people of the process. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. I'm not sure those are, I don't think those are intention-making decisions tonight.
I wouldn't think so, because I told, this is the, um, yeah, this is, you know, this is a line item in the budget, um, I, um, I have worked with, um, NIMIC and, and Ryan specifically, so I also guess I have a bit of an inside track here, just FYI, um. So, uh, I actually agree with you, Mr. Baron, that, um, it's probably best for us to put this out to bid when the time comes. Um, I will say that there are not too many people in the state able to provide the services. So I can think of two off the top of my head, otherwise it's individuals um, who are gainfully employed by other towns. Um, so, so I, so yeah, I think that the process would be, uh, would be devoted out to bid, um. But there's, you know, they, they have to know, Patriot, they'd have to know, um, they'd have to have the resources. I mean, there's not that many, there's just not that many in the area.
All set? Okay. Anybody else in this? Have I had anything else? Karen? Beth?
Right.
Thanks, you're done.
Thank you.
You're gonna, you're gonna run. All right.
Bye guys.
Just. Except, um. Oh, renovation. On my left.
All right, moving on, cemetery operating budget.
Right, so in your packet, John, do you know?
I do.
All right, so in your packet is a draft cemetery budget. Um, what we managed to do, John and I, John Johnson, um, elected cemetery commissioner, um, we were able to reduce this, um, budget by eight thousand dollars. And we reduced the mowing a little bit and this particular budget also is associated with an investment account at Edward Jones. And right now they have some money sitting in their interest about eleven thousand dollars. So if this budget should go over for any reason, um, we would transfer interest into this to zero it out at the end of the year. Um, and the other thing I asked John Johnson for was equal for the reconstruction of Mount Pleasant wall in Old North. And, um, as I'd like to put that into a capital plan.
It's a long route, but.
Yes.
Yeah, that, that's the hard one.
Yeah.
Yeah, because you have that traffic control alone. You have the state on board and.
Oh, yeah. And, you know, at this point, Mount Pleasant is also mapped, so surveying it was mapped, it's been mapped out. So we do anticipate, you know, that there will be, you know, lots sold in the corners, so John can speak more to that, but, um, both John and I are satisfied and comfortable with this draft.
I think, I think it's a reasonable budget, um. What I would say is we've been really happy with the mowing. I think that this, this year and last year, probably the first time I haven't had calls that, you know, this needs to be done or that needs to be done, uh. We just finished mapping a new section of Mount Pleasant Cemetery with Jovi Bonardo. I met with Aviani Monuments today. They're gonna be marking the rows. Uh, it's gonna be a little bit different setup, hopefully easier to maintain based on the way is now everything's kind of piggly piggly all over everywhere. This is gonna be nice, even rows mapped out by a surveyor marked with, um, granite cornerstones so that we can measure appropriately and everything will be a lot nicer. Now that that's done, we're having a meeting, the cemetery commissioner, this meeting at the cemetery on Saturday to develop a plan for repairing and improving stones. And before COVID, I know you and Eric and I, we had that workday down at Maple Grove and we had fifteen, twenty people. If, I, last spring, I tried to get people to come and work in Dipping Hole. And we put it on Facebook, we put it on Instagram, we put posters up, we advertised that we're gonna have cider and donuts. And we did all of those things and we had Cor, Cor Troeger showed up. She was our only volunteer.
She was done?
We had, we done this. I mean, cemetery commissioners were there, Rachel, so I guess we had two volunteers, um. But it was just a little frustrating that we couldn't get that level of support. Now we're finally up to a full, the cemetery commissioner has the three members that, remember I tried to give it back and not feeling it was going back. So we have a full complement. We're meeting on Saturday, gonna start thinking about next cemetery season, um, identifying stones that need to be worked on, trying to figure out a way to recruit volunteers. Excited. That workday, we did a lot, um. I have, I'm asking, uh, I have an estimate for about a half a dozen stones, eight stones, um, that Greg Wilson got from company and it's called Beyond the Grave and, and I, but, and they would come up. I asked them, I'm asking them to review their estimate for next year, but it was over six thousand dollars to do eight stones. I'd rather have a group of guys, you know, a group of people come and straighten thirty stones in an afternoon, you know, and pay them in cider and doughnuts or pizza or whatever they want. Um, so that's kind of an economical way to do necessary work. There's no doubt that we're not doing enough to maintain the stones and, you know. I'm sure you guys noticed when, when you're mowing that, you know, there's stones that are chapped and.
Yeah.
Yeah, it makes it, makes it harder for you. And so we definitely need to, to do that, but generally I'm, I'm satisfied with that, uh, and, and think it, it's a an, an appropriate use of funds and it's reasonable and it's not extreme, but it's not an under budget.
It's conservative. And something else we will be looking at, at Mount Pleasant is the road. There, there needs to be some roadwork done in there. And there is a water issue that needs to be addressed. It's been there for a while. Um, so I think it's time that we start putting a little bit of money into these cemeteries.
I, I, and Karen and I have, have just, we've had a couple meetings to go over the numbers. I agree pulling the money out of Ed Jones is appropriate. Um, you know, it's always a balancing fact. You wanna do everything, but still be fiscally responsible. So, and I think this budget does that.
Right, and we never had a capital plan for cemetery. We've got a local added into the capital plan, so it's there.
Uh, do you have a, do you have a reserve fund for these?
No.
No. So when you say capital plan, like where would we be?
It would have to either be put in here. I have no idea what anything's gonna cost if that's successful.
Right, sure.
So next year we'll revisit that question, Kylie.
Okay, and so that's okay.
But here's the thing, this investment account has been sitting untouched and there's at least eleven thousand dollars in interest that can be spent by the cemetery commissioners and, you know, I think that's, you know, accessible funding right there. For, you know, emergency or, you know, if, if John gets a number on like ten stones to be repaired, you throw it into the capital fund so we can plan for that.
Right.
And what else?
And, and I should have that estimate hopefully before we vote on the budget. So that could be considered at that time.
Any public comment, Mr. Baron?
Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Johnson has kindly, uh, reached out to me in this regard and invited me to the cemetery commissioners meeting, uh, Saturday morning at Mount Pleasant if the weather's good enough. And he acknowledges that, uh, state law simply says that towns shall repair all facilities. He acknowledges that uh state law simply says that towns shall repair all facilities to make the mountains. And may draw upon the treasurer of the town for the, uh, to, to cover the expenses thereof. Now, uh, the only gray stones that have been uh repaired in Mount Pleasant Cemetery during this year. I, 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 I passed through it uh uh once or twice every day. Are two stones that were, were repaired two weekends ago by Mr. and, and Ms. Wilson. And they are, they're, 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 they're near the road that's closest to the bank, he said they were doing them because they're closest to her, to his parents' graves. So, uh, the question is not a matter of uh fiscal uh responsibility, it is a matter of legal responsibility. We need to have a plan for repairing gray stones, for replacing them in all of our, I believe, thirteen cemeteries. Uh, perhaps, perhaps a timeframe of ten years. So that it actually gets done, as opposed to all, it will happen sometime. And uh, I know we all agree on this, and it's easy to uh 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 ignore the dead, of course. And as long as it's closer to that than the rest of you are, I'm uh, I'm, if you like, acting as their representative. So, uh, uh, if necessary, I shall find out how one takes legal action to make this happen. Because the town is derelict and it's legal responsibility to. Repair or replace gray stones, not uh as a matter of uh if we get around to it. Law simply says the town shall, and so I'm going to find out how to make shall happen. And recalling a discussion we had earlier, shall and may, shall is mandatory. So we'll see how this goes, and I'll be there Saturday morning and I, I. Uh, although I've been uh forthright here, I acknowledge uh the gentleman's uh. How can I put it, uh, willingness to uh to do what must, what must be done. But my position is going to be that it's going to have to be enough done so that over a certain number of years, we get it all done. Plus, of course, needless to say, some of those stones are two hundred years old, some of them are going to fall over, that's just how it's going to be. So, uh, you know, uh, more, how, how, how do they say it, more um.
Thank you. I have a brief comment on that, John. Mr. Fairman, you may recall that when I asked you to come. My, my point was I'd like to give you, I'd like you to give us a pep talk. To the cemetery commissioner so that we get moving in this direction. What you just said is exactly what I want the cemetery board to hear, and that's why I invited you. So, thank you for that, those thoughts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Johnson, I thought I would mention it here as well, because generally, uh, alas, the public pays more attention to select work. I, I guess, I guess because they figure those are, I know they're pretty dead. Well, well, now you know that I'm more, uh, this means, or at least the fourth product.
Yeah, cider and donuts, only got us two volunteers.
All right, there's nothing else, let's move on. Town clerk elections in the term.
So, the town clerk's draft budget is in your packet along with the elections. Which is also a responsibility of the town clerk's office. Um, so overall, there's a decrease of seven thousand eight hundred and fifty-three dollars in the town clerk's office. That is, you know, um, salary. And, you know, company affiliates, monuments, um, assistants. Uh, town clerk went up a little bit, it's based on a six percent cost of living raise. Or adjustment, sorry, cost of living adjustment, um, but. Small, small increase. Um, and then for the elections, I'll have John speak to that because. That is his office.
You know, in this, in this fiscal year, we only have town meeting, you know, so that's only one. We have a school meeting, but the schools for that, we don't have to pay for that. Um, you know, so we have one election in the next fiscal year, we have the state office primary in August. The general election in November, town meeting, so our, you know, on each one of those, I need. At town meeting, I need ten dollar clerks, yeah, do I need? You know, so that's either a thousand or eight hundred dollars in salaries for those people to work the polls in addition to. And then programming of the um, that later at town meeting. So those expenses are a little higher for next year than they were this year, we didn't have any elections really this year. Or we, we, we only have town meeting. Although I did get a few calls about when we were voting yesterday.
Those, yeah, you know, I was at also. It was a little bit weird to have the rest of the country be so excited. And then we're like, what, what's going on?
I mean, one of my poll workers called me last week, wondering where she should show up, so.
Yeah, I mean, again, that's minimal.
We've really tried to do a good job on keeping a flat budget.
So these are draft budgets, they're subject to change before January, um, we have. Haven't received the audit yet, we may see a draft audit next week. And that will probably trigger some changes, um. But. We're in better shape this year when. Frequencies, you know. Timing and, um, what we're trying to do.
Question?
Go ahead, Fletcher.
Um, I'm, I'm looking at the treasurer's postage, why do we keep funding that at a level that's so much higher than the actual expenditure?
Um, so that's our next budget and um. Are we outside the?
Yes, uh, be- because, Mr. Chairman, because we have an excellent town clerk, I'm pretty sure the answer to this question is yes, but. I should ask it anyway, uh, are we taking full advantage of everything that the Office of the Secretary of State can do for us regarding elections?
Oh, absolutely.
Hmm, great.
Absolutely, um, the ballot box out there, they pay for. They pay for, uh, in the general election, they reimburse us for postage. Uh, we're, we're super aggressive at getting every penny that's out there.
Let's say, I, I expected the answer would be yes, but, but just for the record, you know, good work is beautiful.
I would be welcome to, to Saturday.
Thank you, John.
Welcome, thank you.
Um. So treasurer's draft budget, um, in this budget, um, again, it's gonna be um salary. Increase. Um, there is. Uh, money in here, it's a stipend. Um, for an assistant treasurer, so we do have somebody that comes there and signs checks. And stuffs all the checks in the envelopes and gets them out the door. Um, she also signs checks for um, pay you off. And stuffs any checks that are not direct deposit. And this has been working out, so this is part of the checks and balance in place. Um, so, yeah, so the postage, um. Fletcher.
Yeah.
Is very expensive, so every month, we are sending out. Interest letters for utilities and tax bills and postage keeps going up. So. That is, you know. It's expensive.
Oh, I, I get that, and that it's, it has gone, there has been a recent increase, but. When I'm looking at the budget, it's still the actual number, like the solid actual number from. FY twenty-five, where are we at? That twenty, twenty-nine sixty-three, it's, the, the budget is running twice what the actual expenditures are. That's, I understand postage is expensive, but we're over budgeting.
Um, do you wanna change that number, Flapper?
Well, it looks like three thousand would be a good number.
Then we'll, it's your budget.
I wouldn't put three.
Well, it, the, the whole board ought to decide that, not just me, but that's what it's looking like.
It does, it does look a little high, but I wouldn't go like.
Stuff could change again.
Well, it changes, it, it gets up so fast, um, I would, I wouldn't. Want us to be losing money on sending out tax bills.
Yeah.
Um, so I mean, I, I'd be, I'd be okay with. Like, I guess in twenty twenty-five, it was forty-five hundred, is that how I mean that?
Almost three. The budget is forty-five.
Three thousand. Yeah, so, um, no, I mean, the act, what we budgeted before was forty-five.
Yes, yeah.
So we could move back down to that.
Forty-five instead of four.
Instead of four, yeah.
And maybe that, Fletcher.
Trying to get off it?
No, things turn off until nine.
What was it? Okay.
Yeah, I haven't set on seventy now.
I've been cold all day.
So, alright, so forty-five hundred for that, um, I'll come back to the board too, if I.
Hey, folks, it's a little bit hard to hear you, just a little bit, so if you can just speak up a little bit more, that would be helpful.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, Rachel did say that you practically gotta be sitting on top of that.
Do we wanna move that a little bit closer?
Um, okay.
If we can. It was a little bit like we can.
No, it's pretty tight, um.
So it couldn't be scooped up probably three feet, I can see from here with the cable, so that I have top.
Then just speak up a little bit.
Right, if you still can't hear us, we'll try to adjust the. Location of that owl.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, ju- ju- just a question here, the, well, uh, uh, was the person who just spoke on, on TV, uh, select person, Olive?
Yes.
Uh, okay, then I know it seems you forget these things, but actually, when a, a meeting is open, under the remote open meeting law. Uh, people who are, uh, uh, members of a board who are attending online are supposed to identify themselves. And I'm not following this, it's just something that's hard to remember, but I didn't realize she was like.
Yeah, I mean, their names are actually on there, so, uh, but you can't see them, so, because there's no. We don't have that TV anymore, so that's a good reminder.
Yeah. Question though, why do we not have a TV anymore?
Because it, it died.
Okay, uh, is there gonna be another one?
Um, the one that died, I actually took from my house and put it up there, so.
Um, budget for another one, yeah, we just, we just shaved off, um, fifteen hundred bucks so we can buy, we can put it somewhere else.
I was, I was pricing TVs yesterday at Walmart, one like this, uh, two hundred eighty-three dollars, so we're not talking big bucks here.
No, I, I mean, it, it, I mean, you, you sit there more often than we do, so you think it's. If, if it's useful.
Well, I think we can turn that laptop around.
Well, you know, I, I'm not in any way insisting, it's just, uh, you know, uh, because, because members of the public can't see it, uh, all, all that's needed is for. Not the select, the selecturians who are attending online and say, hi, you know, uh, uh, Olive, the prosecutor's case is, you know. No, that takes care of it, so I'm not necessarily asking for a new TV, but I also let you know that as of yesterday, it's not big bucks. And of course, uh, uh, Black Friday's coming up, probably get another at least fifty, sixty dollars off. Yeah.
Same line target. Okay.
Alright, so in your packet are employee benefits. Um, so you have health insurance. Um. Dental insurance, life insurance. And, um, so basically, we did a five-year summary. So you folks can see the change over the years. Um, I can say our health insurance, um. Did not go up very much. Um.
A little bit.
Yes.
Wonder why?
Um, well, I know Blue Cross Blue Shield, nobody can touch that right now, um. When we decided to change like, like seven years ago, I mean. It was a, it was a big decision and there was some pushback, but. Honestly, over time, MVP has been the better coverage overall and price overall. So, um, there are other towns that use MVP. Rather than Blue Cross Blue Shield, but there's not many companies out there. So. It's a struggle.
Okay, well, I mean, that's probably good, they just leave it, they leave it as.
So, the second sheet in your packet. Is something that has been presented to the board before. Um, so right now, the town covers ninety percent of the employee. Employee and then ten percent is paid by the employee, so it's a ninety-ten of. For insurance, um, that's excellent. Yeah.
Yeah.
And the town also covers a hundred percent of the Dell, hundred percent of the I for employees. Yeah. So. This has been presented before. If we've wanted to look at cost savings, if the town were to pay a hundred percent for the employees. Um. You can see the number there. Um, so the savings to the town annually is nine seven thousand, seven hundred and nine dollars, but. But the employee has to take care of, if you have a family plan, there's no way an employee can pay that difference.
Yeah, I mean, that, the only way that is good for any of you is if you don't have any other dependents.
Right, but here's the other thing too, if you have a single plan and the town's paying for a family plan. That family plan, that employee is getting more benefits. Um, but. I have to debate this all the time, that, you know, well, with. It's a single plan, you know, the town's paying a lot more for a family plan, you know. Why aren't we compensating the difference, right? And I'm like, yeah, that's not happening, you know, that's not what it's there for. Uh, so we have to look at, you know, fair and equitable. Wait, people are willing to be compensated because they don't.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a price difference, you guys sleep through the night.
Right, exactly.
What?
You don't have to pay three more cupcakes, like we're just.
Right, that's.
Right.
Um, so, you know, it's a challenge having that conversation every year, um, I get it. Um, so this is why this is presented every year.
Heard it even I was single, like, but anyway.
Right. Uh, it's a different era today, okay? That's all I'm saying.
Six seven.
Yeah, so if we were to pay a hundred percent for the employee and, and, you know, it would be like a sixty-forty. You know, um. Am I reading that right? Yeah, so, no.
Sixty-fourty.
Yeah, so sixty percent, we would pay for, you know. A spouse or a fam- towards a family plan, right?
Gotcha.
So the employee would actually have to pay forty percent of that policy rate. And again, see how it jumps up though? Now, two hundred and twenty thousand, eight hundred and eleven dollars annually. And then the last column is a hundred percent for the employee. And then you do fifty percent for spouse or family, and then the employee pays fifty percent. Um. And you can see the figures in here, what somebody would be paying.
Yeah.
So a family every month, if somebody had a family plan at fifty-fifty, they'd be paying seven hundred and fifty-nine dollars a month. Out of their paycheck. So.
Yeah, do we have a, um?
We have an HRA, Health Equity. And that Health Equity is, um. For a single is sixteen hundred dollars, for spouse and family, it's thirty-two.
Good, and then do we have a incentive? Um, to not take our insurance?
Yes, there is an opt-out, if you opt out of taking the insurance, um, there's a five thousand dollar. Um. Payment that goes to the N S O E, it's a monthly. So it used to be three thousand, it's five thousand now.
That's comparable to other.
Yeah.
Places.
Yeah.
I don't feel comfortable changing. The, the. From the current system.
Right.
Personally, I know it, I know it costs more to the town, but. Um. You run the risk of losing people. Um. If you, I mean, the, 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 the family. Monthly charges here are not sustainable.
Yeah.
Um, so they would either have to go to. The other spouse's. Insurance, which may not be very good either, you know, and may might be expensive too. Which is, uh, just pricing people out, and the cost of the. Insurance is. I mean, just. What the. Insurance policy doesn't pay is still a lot of money, so I just don't see like, I just don't see that being. Fair for our people.
So what is the line? Yeah, so what I'd like to do, and I'm not sure I get asked the question of, um. Health equity is. A single person who only has sixteen hundred dollars towards their deductible, I'd like to increase that to at least. Thirty-two hundred dollars, and that way the Health Equity, the HRA is equal across the board. And. See how that works for a year or two.
If you could make the HRA deductible, yeah, match the. If you could make the contribution of the HRA match the deductible, that would be.
Yes, yeah.
Um, are these? I, these aren't high deductible plans.
This, so this, no, no, they're not.
The model that Brownborough had, and it worked pretty well, it was actually pretty good. Was that, um, it was, it was high deductible plans.
Right.
And then there was an HSA that the town contributed fifteen hundred to, and you could contribute to it as well. And then after you exhausted the HSA, it switched to the HRA, which covered the deductible, until you got to. Use the actual insurance.
Oh, great. Hmm. So this is the plan for twenty-six, Eileen. And we have the platinum plan, which is the best plan, yeah. Um.
So be the qualified high deductible line is what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I saw there on that side.
Man, I wanna work here, Karen, hire me.
I did an admin assistant.
You know how much sleep I lose thinking about this stuff, but it's insane.
Yeah.
It's insane.
I mean, we don't have to do it this year, it's just something to think about.
Right.
It might reduce the cost, and it might still give them, if the employer's already covered.
Yep.
So.
It's a little more relate to, I think, um, so.
Yeah. It's more complicated for the employee to navigate the system. But.
Well, I think the state of Vermont really needs to take a hard look at, um, health insurance. Um. And start more peace, yeah. I have no information.
Right, that's the, yeah. What can take?
So there should be some universal. Insurance, but, yeah.
But what we offer is. Pretty darn good, you know, that's.
Yes.
It was for you.
I would lose less sleep, but I could get much more sleep. Yeah, it's really nice.
No, the health insurance, we, you know, it's a big number at the end of the year. Um, but. Yeah. I'm thankful I have it.
It's, yeah, it's wonderful.
Yep. Um. So the third sheet basically shows you like for. The general fund, right, which is Michelle, Jonathan, Kim, Rachel. All have an insurance, right, so that's, that's what we pay, right?
Oops, wait, I'm sorry.
Um. This, this one right here, yeah.
Oh, I don't have the lines.
Uh. So it's titled Health Insurance Benefits FY twenty-seven Budget Figures for Fletcher and Peg. Um.
Say that again, Karen.
So the sheet we're looking at says Health Insurance Benefits. FY twenty-seven Budget Figures.
You're, you're muted. Oh, I can see it from here.
I don't know, um, Mr. Owl.
Oh.
Did you find it?
Um, no, are they before the, um. All the policy stuff, the procedure stuff, I'm not seeing it with the other budget stuff.
They're after, they're after, I don't.
Oh, okay.
They, yeah, they didn't get.
Okay, okay, let me go there then.
Miss Staple.
Page thirty-seven of the handout.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you know, fire to target, if we were, you know, to move forward with a full-time chief, that is what you would be looking at. Um, and actually, this is, yeah. This is more, this is probably the HRA, I would have to look at my spreadsheet. Um, highway department, a hundred and one thousand, three hundred and sixty-nine dollars, twenty-one cents. Um. And then the library. Yeah. And in the bottom shows you, you know, how many singles, how many doubles, how many family. There's, uh. Employee and, you know, child, and you have two opt-outs, so.
Okay.
But. That's a lot of money, you know, just looking at benefits.
Yeah.
What's the parent line?
The parent line is an employee and a child.
Oh, I suppose to a family.
Yes, or like, uh. Two-person would be like, it could be, you know. An employee and a spouse. Eric, you've got a hand?
Hello, go ahead.
Thank you, I'm just wondering if somebody can help me make sense of the lack of a huge increase in the health insurance. Anybody in the state who's buying off the market is looking at nine hundred dollars or better for a bronze plan. So I'm not, like, is there a, a state buy-in for municipalities to offset that?
No. So that is what we received from MVP. Uh, and this is how it here, again. Um. So I can't explain it, Heather.
Just grateful for it.
It's, you know, something's. There's only two companies that can beat with one another in the state of Vermont. And that's.
Right. It's MVP and Blue Cross Blue Shield, but now that nobody is getting any kind of tax credit, a bronze plan through MVP is nine hundred dollars or better. With like a ten thousand dollar deductible. So I'm just wondering how. The town got such a great price. Eh, are we missing something? Did we not get an update? Cause I'm just curious, I'm trying to make it make sense.
Um. No, I took the prices from the, the plan that was presented for twenty twenty-six. This is, um, so I'm trying here, those are the prices. Um, the other thing too, so when I look at this, so it's July through December, twenty twenty-six. And then for January through June to finish up fiscal year. I end up at like a ten percent increase, I don't have those prices yet, so. I have a spreadsheet that calculates everything.
I mean, this doesn't really help the, eh, cause this just has the price for this year, it doesn't have the increase from the year before. So, the year before was.
Well, and, and you can't break it out.
Do it that way.
Right, but can't do it in the town court either, cause it's in different departments. So the increase was what, one point nine percent?
That isn't, that is wild.
Right. Wow. It's good, oh, cause, oh, cause you split it up to that, yeah, um. That's a really good question, Heather, I don't know, uh, but, I mean. If it makes you feel better, we had a twenty percent increase in twenty twenty-three.
Right.
So.
I mean, I don't know if, I just don't wanna be caught in a place where. The numbers aren't coming through because it's a fiscal year rather than the calendar year, which is kind of the way the state insurance has been operating. People looking to pick up the open window now are looking at. You know, a thousand dollar a month payments for minimal care and high deductibles, and I. I'm hoping we're budgeting appropriately to cover that should it come through, you know, mid fiscal year.
Yeah, no, this is a race effective between January first, twenty twenty-six and December thirty-first. So it's calendar year.
Thank you.
Is that sheet called MVP?
Yes, yeah.
Just checking those from the source, I suppose, if somebody, uh, made something here in light of.
No, no.
I'm very careful with this power, cause it's so. Volatile, right? Let's see now.
Well, actually, I, I, I was very checking that, uh, it was from them, because if, if from them, they committed themselves.
Yes.
Yeah, it's printed, it's, it's been, it's been printed and published.
And I think there was a article too, um. I forgot which, it, it, I got it offline, um. Talking about the insurances and, um. How one went sky-high and the other one didn't, so.
I do remember that.
There is information out there, Heather?
Thank you, I'll look into it.
Okay. Um. And then the eye insurance, folks, we are switching to, um. Eye Med from V S P, um. It is a little bit lower. In cost, but it gives us more benefits. So again, the eye insurance is a hundred percent fee for the employee. And if the employee wants to, you know, add their spouse or family, um, they pay for that cost.
So I guess there's no parent option, it's just family or. There's no, there's nothing under parent.
Right.
Okay. Okay.
So. That suggests on benefits.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, uh, going back to a comment our town manager made, as I understood correctly. Some employees are questioning whether, uh, those who are, uh, have families or perhaps spouses. Uh, are receiving more benefits than those who are single. Uh, so there's two aspects to that argument, first one is insurance companies bill, uh, 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 rate, uh. Rate per person, so if there's more people. There, there, there's, there's a larger premium. Now, the other thing is, uh, the basic principle of insurance is that we all pay every year, whether we use it or not. So that those who are, uh, ha- have the misfortune to de- to need to use it are made whole. So what we're doing is we're creating a pool, and, and, and those who need it mutual benefit. Get to benefit, and then, then they need us in another year, so it's actually perfectly fair. There's no, uh, there's, there's, there's no possible unfairness there, as long as, uh, uh, you know, uh. All children are rated similarly, all spouses are rated similarly, and all employees are rated similarly, that simply is, this is how insurance works. I, uh. Did I understand correctly that at, at, at the present time, we have, uh, um, uh, healthcare savings accounts?
Yes.
We don't, like, I just wanted to double check that.
Savings accounts or, um, it's the HRA.
It's an HRA, not a savings.
It's spending, it's not the HSA, it's H R A.
Hmm, sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wasn't necessarily concerned about, which I was, well, you certainly understanding that there is one.
Yes.
Nice.
Yeah. Nice. Um.
Cost of living.
Everybody's also, cost of living. Adjustment, wages. Um, again, we did a five-year comparison. And you can see actual. Through the IRS and then putney, what we. Gave for cost of living adjustment and then the difference. So I will say that. So one year was higher, but one, two, three. Three years was below the minimum cost of living, so adjustment. So right now, we're at a negative four point seven percent. And in. My budgets draft right now, I have in there six percent.
Okay.
Which will get us closer. Um. Um. What's? And, and here's the same, so the two and a half percent, right, if we're down four point seven, if you add the two point five. That brings it up to seven point two, and like I said, in the budget range, I have six percent. And I think next year I'll look at, you know, add a little more. To like kind of balance it.
Yeah.
Karen.
Uh.
So Karen?
Yes.
Uh, what you're trying to do is get is make up for those years and what we were down?
Yes.
Mm-hmm.
I don't think there's really a good time peg.
Mm-hmm.
And having Kim put this spreadsheet together for me, all of these spreadsheets, by the way. Um, it gives me a better picture. Of where we should be, and, um.
How did you decide to go, how many years to go back here and look at this? Um, just curious.
You know, it was. After COVID, I didn't wanna go back ten years.
Uh-huh.
It just didn't make sense to me.
Uh.
You know, I mean, honestly, if you look at twenty-three, twenty-four, where it was eight point seven percent.
Mm-hmm.
I think, you know, which is a large increase, um, you know. It's always hard when you're trying to. Not raise taxes. And, you know, it's. We have sacrificed. And I think it's time to balance that out.
Right, I, I agree with you a hundred percent, I, I don't think this is where the town should be looking to, um. Uh, cut costs.
Right, right. Yeah. And I may change that, I may come back to the board and ask for the seven point two percent. But I just need to look at the bottom line, I also wanna make sure I have the audit. But I just need to look at the bottom line. I also wanna make sure I have the audit. In hand, so I can see those numbers and, you know, make some slight adjustments, hopefully.
Mr. Patrick, go ahead.
You can call him?
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, um, I guess first a question to our town manager, uh, uh. I of course quite agree that uh, uh, our employees should be receiving, uh, our county employees should be receiving a living wage. That said, uh, I'm simply curious, um, when, when, when you're uh, adjusting for inflation, which. The statistic are you using as your indicator for uh, change in consumer prices?
Um, I am looking at, um, the C P I and I think it's C P I. Um, hang on one minute. And I also get. Um. The federal government, they're right now, um. Cost of living adjustment increases, so, um, it comes from the fact sheet. Mister Bearman from Social Security Administration. So they put it out every year.
Oh, yes, they do. I was wondering if you might be using that. The point is that, uh. Uh, our employees are not social security beneficiaries, to the best of my knowledge.
Mm-hmm.
Uh. The Bureau of Labor Statistics, uh, uh, U S Bureau of Labor Statistics, every month, with the consumer price index. And I, I checked before I came over here. October isn't out yet for September. It was a, a, a three point zero percent annually. And it's not that I'm necessarily trolling with your figures, but I'm wondering if there may be a compound interest effect in there. So. I'm going to ask you, could you email to me the information so I could have a look at it?
Sure.
And uh, I'll, 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 I'll comment further after that. It's not that I'm disagreeing with you, it's simply I'm curious at this point.
Yeah. And I also have used the Bureau of Labor's statistics, so I kinda look at both and um.
I'm just suggesting that social security uh, is a different thing because uh. Social security is a fixed income for retired people and also for uh, uh, disabled people, of course.
Right.
Especially young. But uh, that is not the same sort of income as employment income. Because it is simply, this is the amount you're going to get. You cannot work extra hours. You cannot take a second job. Or something like this in order to make more money. Of course, you're on social security. You can also work. But my point is that it's actually a completely different uh, system. Because it is based upon uh, uh, seniors like me who are retired. It is a fixed income. So there are, uh, there, there are different considerations uh, having to do with uh. We don't have the options that people are working issue.
Thank you for that, Howard.
One other comment in response to Mister Fairman's. Um, this is Fletcher. Um. The, the cost of living from the Bureau of Labor Statistics isn't that simple either. There's also, there's at least half a dozen different numbers that the B L S puts out. And the one that is most often cited is actually for urban consumers. So, but if you bur- burrow into it, you find a bunch of different. Numbers depending on where in the economy, in the country you are.
And it changes every month.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, uh, electperson Proctor is correct. Uh, I did not want to get into the weeds there. If I would like to get into the weeds, I'm willing. Because there's all kinds of things involving seasonal adjustment and X, uh, food and, and, and accepting for food and energy, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, but, my, my, my basic point is uh, that we should be using uh. Uh, and inflation rate most likely from the Bureau of Labor Statistics, because, because that is the standard that is used, for example, by all investment analysts. Uh, and. Use one that applies to people who aren't employed. That's my key point. People who are employed. And as far as which one we pick, uh, I'm, I'm glad to get into the weeds on that, but we should use one that is uh. Official, which would mean from the B L S.
Thank you. All right, moving on. Last one for the old business, financial policies, you're out.
In your packet, there's an internal control and financial management just in jurors. Um, if, is updated. Uh, I'll see the changes in red, hopefully. Um. And it's just, the changes are, are current. What we're currently doing and who's doing that tax. So, we felt it needed to be updated, cause we had changes and, um. There's nothing really like. Drastic in here.
Yeah, it's, it's just clarifications mostly.
Yes, yeah. You know, and like I said, who's doing what, um, um. Explaining, you know, that like the pro- improvement guidelines is gonna be, you know, it's a separate policy. Um, the credit card policy is a separate policy.
Mm-hmm.
You know, how deposits are made. You know, we have electronic um, payroll now, so that's in here. The auditor also likes to see this every year, so. Keeping it up to date is important. Um, if folks have not read this. And wanna take an extra week. It's fine with me. But Kim Monroe, who is our treasurer, myself, have gone through this. We've worked together. She's made changes and you're comfortable with this, the way it reads.
Thank you, Mr. Fletcher. You have any comments on that?
Um, I would love to read it and talk about it the next time we get together. I would like to give it the attention that it deserves. Thank you.
I, I would, uh, I wouldn't go so far as to say I would love to read it, but I do think I'd need to spend more time with it.
Yeah.
Mr. Baron?
Uh, Mr. Town Manager, what are the bold significant changes?
Um, so it's basically updating who, who does what. Um, whether it's a treasurer or the assistant treasurer. It's uh, updating our deposit procedure. Um, and who receives money and, you know, how it's processed. Um. So. Payroll processing, same thing. You know, we have a third party that we work with. So, you know, it starts here, it goes to the third party, comes back here, you know, finance director, you know. Signs off on it. Um, we also do direct deposit for payroll, so that's, you know. A step two that takes two different people. And, uh, you know, new hire procedure too, you know, reconciliation has to happen. And again, so we will have separate policies for, for improvement. And um, credit card, and that's outlined here. It just states it's a separate policy. Really, it's, it's just making sure that we are current with any changes in our office. And, um. And actually, this will be in the operating manual, sit in the treasurer's office, so. If something should happen, somebody should be able to pick this up and use this as a guideline of. For certain processes that we have to do, you know, on a weekly basis.
Good.
We're getting there, Howard.
Yeah.
So, from improvement policy. Um, we do have one, uh, that's rather old. It needs to be updated. Um, in this policy, folks, there are some highlighted areas. Um, mine are in yellow. Yours may be grayed out. Um. I will be requesting assistance with this policy from the select board, as you do set policies. Um. I did go through this and. I was. Thinking about it, going back and forth, and then I finally just said. Karen, work with the select board on this one. So. So again, this one will be, you'll need to read it, review it, and come back with any. Suggestions, comments, questions. And we can fill in some of this. And try to move this forward before the end of the year.
Can I borrow yours before I go through? I like to look apart, should be out of it.
It works, it works.
But it's great.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, it's mostly have to do with the amounts.
It's amounts, yeah. So, so on page three.
Okay.
Um, it is.
Oh, I see. Well, it's quite spread.
Yes, it's very, yeah, very subtle.
Yep. And then down, down the bottom of that page, like there's one, two, three, five sentences from the bottom. Goes on to the following page. Mostly it is um, dollar amounts. Um. Yeah, on page six, micro purchases, simplified acquisition. You know, some of this stuff. Doesn't need to be in here. Um, this is a V L C T template as well, folks. And, um. There are some numbers I feel like they're way too high. Because it almost allows like the highway department to go out and buy a backhoe. And that is, so we need to reduce those figures a little bit, but. I need input from this board to see where your comfort level, level will be.
I'm, I agree with you that the numbers need to be looked at. That I was. Really surprised to see a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar dividing line between, uh, I guess. Simplified acquisition and the, I guess, significant versus large.
Right.
It really made me wonder if it's a V L C T template, wh- what towns they're working with, cause. You're right, you could go out and buy a backhoe for sure.
Yep. The other thing too, Fletcher, um, our policy, I think it goes back to two thousand. Fifteen or something, it might be in that book here, but, um. Those numbers are re- very small in our current policy. And what we're trying to do also with this is, you know, create a purchase order. Number system, so. Folks, don't just go out and purchase something. Without having a purchase number. And making sure that the treasurer's office has the vendor's name. Their, you know, tax I D number and everything else that goes along with setting up a new vendor in our system. Um, it makes it very difficult when we have to chase some paperwork after the fact. That we already have in the voice in hand that needs to be paid in thirty days. Um, so we're, we're buttoning up a lot of loose ends. And again, this is a policy that will reside in the treasurer's office, in the operating manual. Um, or direction. It will probably be in, um, the town manager's office as long as they are finance director as well. Um, so. But I would like. I'll give the select board a week or two to review this. We don't have to do them all at once, but. They are kind of related.
Yeah.
So. You find it?
What?
Also, maybe.
So, I think that's just in policy.
Oh, great.
And then monkeying the.
Like ordinance.
In the trailer.
It's not ordinance, but it being, I think, yeah. Keep looking in the blue book, you know. Getting organized with all this stuff, so, you know.
You have a, you have a. It will come from here.
Right. I thought that was ordinances and policies.
This should just be, yeah, both, all suits. It's just like ordinances. That's not procedures and policies. Unless it was misfiled in here somehow.
No?
Start it up here.
Very. Oh, we'll get a new one. There, for sure. Um, yeah, this is, this is like. Well. But I will give you the, um, current one.
Okay.
So you can compare.
Okay, see, there's a quarter fifty thousand dollar micro purchase in power. I could buy my house.
I know.
I know.
I know, it's crazy.
I think you have a handle.
Mr. Baron?
Mr. Chairman, uh, quite simply, the only, uh, uh, uh. People in Putney who should have authority to authorize a quarter million dollar purchase are county board. Period. Even in large corporations, uh, that, that, that's the, uh, that's the vice presidential level, at least. Well, we do not have, we're not a corporation here, but the authorities on, on money of, 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 are the, uh. Are, are the county board. That in no way involves something like, uh, uh. So far, uh, uh, I don't know, uh, uh, lost a wheel and, uh, we have to fix that right now. We're just going to snow again. Now, that sort of thing, you have to allow our public works, uh, uh, director to take care of. But that's not what we're talking, that, that, nothing like that costs a quarter million dollars.
Thank you.
Credit card policy. Um, it was part of the internal. Um. Control policies. We're gonna separate it. It'll be its own policy. And it's short and sweet, and this one, we'll keep it. Um. It's standard for me every year, so there is. Twenty-five hundred on each credit card right now. And there's one, two, three. There were four, there's three. Um. You know, every January, I just ask people not to spend money. Um, I don't think. Any department head needs a credit card for ten thousand dollars. You know this. Because it allows spending in, you know. If somebody spends two thousand dollars and then they turn around in six months, spend another two thousand dollars and, you know. It adds up. So, you know, the limit on the cards is twenty-five hundred and. Come January, anything over two thousand, they have to get approval from me. So again, read this. If the select board's comfortable with it, great, if you have comments or questions, you bring them back. No questions?
Nope.
I'm more restricted on balance policy, and this is back in your packet, I'm gonna rely on the select board to review and come back and decide whether or not we, you know, adopt this policy.
This is the one that we already adopted?
Yeah, but we repealed it, because it was, and, because it was before it was voted on. So.
Yes. Good. The one that, um, from Larry?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, you had asked me to reach out to legal counsel, I did that um, twice, as a matter of fact, second time he didn't respond, um, so his opinion is that the town of Putney obviously created the select board unrestricted reserve fund and no further actions required. He looked into it, and
He's good with the policy that you proposed.
That's right.
Okay.
The one that is in your packet right now.
I mean, I personally have a problem with adopting this tonight. Because we've already adopted it and it's been in the packet several times.
And the purpose has not changed from town meeting. Um, it is the same verbiage that is in the article, yeah.
I think we should go ahead and adopt it. And that may be a motion, I don't know.
It is a motion.
Sounds like a motion, so moved.
Thank you, any comments on that?
No, no, I, I don't have any comment.
Moved. Public comment, Mr. Baron.
Mr. Chairman, uh, this has been pending for some time, and, and now it appears is when we get into it. Uh, to make this public, I have to read the whole thing, uh, those who are, who are attending online, I will email you copies in the, after this meeting. During twenty twenty-five Putney Town Meeting, voters established a select board unrestricted reserve fund. As of now, this select board unrestricted reserve fund never has had any funds initially deposited to it, and therefore it is not yet legally with this. The authorizing Vermont statute states, at an annual or special meeting duly warned, a municipality may establish a reserve fund to be under the control and direction of the legislative branch of the municipality. The reserve fund shall be set, shall be kept in a separate account and invested as our other public funds, and may be expended for such purposes for which established, or when authorized by a majority of the voters present and voting at an annual or special meeting duly warned, or other purposes. The full Vermont Supreme Court bench has stated, just because a taxing authority may provide for future expenses does not warrant unnecessary accumulation in the treasury for the remote future or for contingencies which, which may never occur, recognizing that a municipality cannot unnecessarily accumulate monies in the public treasury. Any municipal reserve fund therefore cannot be unrestricted because it may be expended for such purposes for which established, or when authorized by a majority of the voters present and voting at an annual or special meeting duly warned, or other purposes, and cannot unnecessarily accumulate monies in the public, in the public treasury as per Vermont statute and the Vermont Supreme Court. I therefore am prepared to bring a legal action challenging the legality of this select board unreserved fund, if and when any funds have been initially deposited to it. I take the liberty of suggesting that the town of Putney consult town attorney Lawrence Slayson as to whether he would be prepared to defend the town of Putney against any such legal action. If attorney Slayson would not be prepared to defend the town of Putney against any such legal action, everyone can save time and money, and the select board unrestricted reserve fund can be repealed by voters during twenty twenty-six Putney Town Meeting, possibly replacing it with a reserve fund having specific purposes for which established. So I'll hand out your copies to the folks who are here present, and I, I promise that when I get home, I'll send copies to the, uh, uh, select person who are not present.
There's, there's, there, there's no, we just got legal, um, uh, legal thing that, um, made it very clear that this was not only legal, but that Larry Slayson is entirely comfortable with it. And if he's not comfortable defending the town as our legal counsel, then, um, we shouldn't have given that. I'm ready to vote.
Mr. Chairman, can I just ask one question here? Apologies, uh, uh, select person caller, but, uh, uh, there were a few words that you spoke, uh, uh, quite softly, I could not hear them over here. I'm to give you to say, uh, uh, if the, uh, town attorney is not willing to defend the town, then you said some other words.
Then he shouldn't have given his opinion.
Ah, okay, well, you know, he, he probably, uh, he, he of course did not know what you were going to hear from, uh, what you were, were going to hear from me this evening, and, you know, we're, we're only at the beginning of, of, of something here, so, uh, I did, uh, I, I, and also I did not know that, that there was, that he had given a legal opinion. So, uh, I've, I, I've provided, uh, uh, a, a perspective, and, uh, and, uh, I will take it from here, uh, uh, I, I'm, I'm assuming that you will, that you will send a copy to, uh, uh, a copy of my letter to our town attorney, and we'll see where we go with this.
I will send this to legal counsel tomorrow, but Friday he is on vacation for two weeks, and he will be out of state.
I'll, I'll send you an electronic copy that you can forward to him.
Sure.
That, well, with a couple of the news, uh, when I get home, I'll just send you all an electronic copy, because I have you in a, uh, my Microsoft album group.
Thank you, Mr. Baron. All right.
Could I make a comment in, in response to Mr. Fairman's?
Go ahead.
In general, I agree with Mr. Fairman about the, the town accumulating sums of monies, because they have been collected from the taxpayer and, you know, taxpayers and you know, just sit parking it in an account or using it on a whim is a bad idea. On the other hand, I will tell you that what I consider necessary or unnecessary in those kind of contingency accounts was very much affected by Irene. You know, I think, I think things, the world changed when that storm passed through, and I think it's headed for more changes in the same direction, so I think, uh, what is a necessary buffer now is different than it was ten years ago.
Mr. Chairman, uh, uh, a select person proctor is correct, he probably is thinking of the new legislation, I forgot the site right now, that, that, that became effective July first, regarding allocated fund balances.
Right.
The argument before the general assembly and that regard was, uh, regarding not just Irene, but although we've not suffered one here up in northern Vermont, they've suffered some pretty severe flooding since fighting. And it, it, it was addressing this problem, uh, the question is, uh, in, in, in my opinion, does that, uh, does that entail an unrestricted, uh, 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 unrestricted amount of money? Or does it, uh, wh- wh- which can be, which can be expended for any purpose at the discretion of, of, of any select board or city council of data Vermont? Or, uh, or, or, or referred to a fund that is for the purpose of responding to, uh, uh, a natural disaster, uh, if and when it occurs. As for that, well, we had a few years ago when the San Diego subway was, was launched out, and also the Colbert down on Ruber Road, and a bunch of others which I've forgotten right now, but that was, that was quite a rainy evening. So, uh, the, the, the basic question is, uh, does, uh, does a Vermont statute and, uh, do Vermont statute and Vermont court allow an unrestricted reserve fund? I believe that, that, that they do not, and I am so stated. If it turns out that attorney Slayson believes they have, then of course this is something that would be adjudicated by a court. Because, uh, uh, we need to know, and there, the, uh, the, uh, 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 Ludenberg, the, the, uh, Supreme Court, uh, decision that I, uh, that, that I cited is the only, uh, case law in Vermont regarding municipal reserve funds. There's a bunch of case law regarding, uh, condo reserve funds, but this will be the only one regarding municipal reserve funds, and as always, I emphasize, I am not a lawyer, but on the other hand, anybody can, can research case law nowadays, that, that's available via Google.
Again, we have a second, and our motion on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I guess I didn't expect you. Yeah, don't, I'll, I'll.
Alright. Some things I just kind of move on.
I know, this is one of them. Alright, um, so reserve funds, I, I put that on there, Fletcher, I don't but, but your baby.
I got nothing to say right now, the baby isn't crying, I guess.
It was, yeah. Alright, I, I guess I would ask, when you're ready to have this back on?
Yeah, um, well, we should, we should talk in our planning sessions. Maybe later this week.
Yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow, okay?
Uh, tomorrow I'm gonna be doing a trial, so I'll be relatively unavailable, but Friday I should have time.
Alright, I'll talk to you about that, okay?
Okay.
We don't need an executive session?
I don't.
Good. Next meeting, I wonder if that'll be a regular meeting?
Correct.
Can I hear a motion again? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
We all thank you.
By the way, also following sheriffs, uh, uh, one of my, one of my work corporation, uh, uh, one of my coworkers, his wife was, uh, uh, pregnant, and then she delivered. But we were product of mergers, so, uh, one company insured her when she conceived, and the other one delivered. First company says they did not, uh, 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 cover her when she delivered, the other company said it was a pre-existing condition. Now, uh, we had eighteen thousand employees, so we were pretty significant.